No, I have no pendulations.
Welcome everyone to the April 26 regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Tonight's Board of Supervisors meeting is being recorded. First up on the agenda, we have the receipt of the minutes. Has everyone gotten a chance to look at the minutes? March 28, 2022.
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Is there a motion?
So move.
For a second. All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, motion passes. Next up, we see to the invoice history, March 2022. Has everyone gotten a chance to look at the invoice history?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Is there a motion?
So move.
A second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Motion carries. Next up, we have received of the December 2021 balance report and the yield to date budget report. I don't know if there's any, I think our finance director, I don't know if he's he's not present in the room if you don't mind. No?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe he is up to his head.
Is there any questions from? Are there any questions from the board? I think biggest takeaway is that our revenue has increased and our expenditures are down.
The one thing like we want to be mindful of is the expenditure or the revenues are up primarily because of the significant increase in the property transfer tax, which I don't think we can count on every year. We just need to be mindful of that in the budget for next year.
Yes. There's also something that stood out to me as well. I think we had more snow this year. So a little bit of higher expenses for snow removal than we anticipated. But the numbers are there against you, the takeaways. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Motion carries. Next up, we have a presentation from our engineer, Gilmore Associates around our park and rec strategic plan. Take it away, Jim.
Thank you. So we have a short presentation for you this evening. Jamie's going to pull it up here on the screen. I also have Emily from my office with me. She's a landscape architect in our planning department and was did the bulk of the work on this plan. We made a very similar presentation to your park and rec board. Last week, we have their comments. The plan in front of you is a draft. And the the plan here is to to take your comments, their comments, incorporate them together, finalize this plan and then, you know, make it a public document. Starting getting some projects done. So Jamie, if you could go to the first slide, I'm just going to go through briefly the like overall objectives of the study and then Emily's going to go through each park. And at the end of each discussion about the parks, like you can ask your questions and we'll just kind of move forward with it that way. So the general plan objectives were to analyze the existing conditions. What are your needs? What are your desires? And then to prioritize recommendations for each of your five parks that you own. We want to examine all the focus parks to determine the ideal parks for certain amenities that maybe you don't have in the township such as pickleball. There are not restrooms, public restrooms at every park. Emily also talked about a couple of other amenities that we see around in the region that we could potentially incorporate into your parks. And then we want to identify and prioritize the parks for the replacement of playgrounds. A lot of your playground structures are in the 15 to 20 year old range. So you know, you want to get a plan together to systematically replace them in the coming years. We want to ensure ADA accessibility and inclusivity to the parks wherever feasible. And then we want to talk about your McCormick House and, you know, potential next steps for that. There's a there's a flow chart that we'll go through. Sort of try to determine, you know, what you guys ultimately want to do with it. So I'm going to turn it over to Emily now, but uh.
Thank you. So as Jim mentioned, I'm kind of going to go through park by park. I'm not going to go through every recommendation. Those are outlined in more detail in the report, but just sort of talk about some key highlights and the general themes of the recommendations we were looking at for each park. If I could have the next slide, that would be perfect. Can I have the next slide? Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. So as far as Oxford Park goes, we really looked and sort of focused in on the playground there primarily because as Sandy, the Parks and Rec Director conveyed to us, she is no longer able to get replacement parts for that specific piece of equipment likely due to its age and the fact that the manufacturers just stopped making it. So one of the things we looked at is sort of redesigning that area as you can see in just a quick concept sketch on the little plan above. Basically, we looked at combining the existing separated two to five year old play areas and the five to 12 year old play areas into one combined area. And then turning the existing two to five year old sort of tot lot area into a picnic grove to take advantage of some of the existing shade trees. So the playground was really one of the bigger focuses here. If I could have the next slide, the other big focus was to look at striping the existing basketball court for pickleball. So as you can see in the lower graphic, that's sort of more or less how the striping would work out on the existing basketball courts as well as installing some sort of windscreen that would make it a little bit easier for pickleball players. Are there any questions about Oxford Park?
I just have a quick question. I know that previously we had recommendations that Oxford wasn't a good park for people. How did I just wanted to know how that changed?
Sure. So we discussed that a bunch on several parks while we were out in the field kind of as a group, myself, Judy, Jim and Kathy and Janine, as well as some of the park board members were out on the field looking at all the parks together. We also looked at Penland Park for pickleball, but determined that, you know, do the proximity of neighbors and the concerns of noise, that that probably wasn't the best fit. And we just determined that this would probably be one of the easiest ones to retrofit and would likely have little issues with noise and neighbor complaints just based on where it's sited.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't, I thought it was more like the wind or the sun, or I'm not certain what the issues were, but I thought it was like environmental issues as opposed to like community issues, but does that windscreen kind of mediate them?
Yeah. So the alignment was another issue with this. The ideal pickleball alignment is, I believe, north, south. So this one is northwest. So but it's kind of like the second best option we can get versus aligning a new court somewhere. So that was your.
And if I could just add, we were actually talking about a new court, not re-striping an existing court in that new court. Yes, was we were told serious football players once once been aligned in a certain manner and that didn't fit that. And actually, I think this came to mind. Janine, correct me if I'm wrong. When we saw that out there on our on our tour, it just seemed too easy to pass up for the for the repainting. So.
Now, what one of the nearest residences, residential homes to where the people courts propose?
So I know because there's sort of a lot behind it, but.
Yeah, there's, I don't know the exact distance, but there is open space and there's forests between between them. The blocks are right. They are not, the yards for these houses do not back directly up to where this would be. There is open space and then the yards.
So the windscreen plus the trees would deaden the sound because it's a the sound carries.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on Oxford? I think we're ready for the next slide.
Sorry, I have a question. In the case that you put the pickleball court there, is there enough parking to accommodate people that would come play pickleball?
I know we had discussed that particularly during large events, because as I understand it, Oxford is currently used for your summer concert series. That parking can be an issue there, but we also were sort of working through some of these issues while we were talking in the field. Generally, what we've seen from the demographic that's playing pickleball is that it's happening earlier in the morning. Whereas a lot of the heavier park uses with the basketball court or things like those concerts would be happening later in the day. So in an ideal world, it might be better to have more parking, but for where we're at currently, it looked like it would be sufficient.
Is there any possibility in the future that annual parking?
That wasn't something we talked about, but there could be space there.
I don't, I don't think that with the way the the parking is oriented now, the way the park is, and then there's the natural area that where the trails go through. I don't know that there's a huge advantage to opportunity to add parking there.
Well, in light of wanting to make the community more walkable, entirely in place parking spaces, but on the other hand, is there a way to get there to the park? That's a trail or a walk?
So one of the, one of the recommendations and the opportunities that we identified is there's a, there's a trail system that goes around the the park and there's an opportunity to add a spur out to Cambridge and Tanglewood so that you don't have to walk along Cambridge and past the narrow the culvert there to to get to the park. So that's in the plan as a recommendation.
That sounds great.
Any other Oxford questions? Okay. So the next part we looked at was Penland Woods. Here we really focused on potential passive improvements and amenities that could be added as well as some basic, you know, park infrastructure upgrades. So one of the big sort of low hanging fruit items that we looked at was upgraded backstops at the ball fields in the park. As we had heard, there were some issues with fly balls coming off the fields and damaging cars. So that was sort of one of the first ones and one that you'll hear again in Penland Park is to consider repairing or replacing the pavilion. As we had also heard, there was some issues with the way the posts were installed. So those were two sort of basic infrastructure items that we looked at. From there, we talked about the potential of designing and installing a sensory garden. For those who may not know what that is, it's a garden that tries to incorporate all four senses. So sight, smell, touch and taste, although not always taste, generally touch and smell are two of the bigger ones. As well as potentially looking at some sensory play equipment that could, you know, be used in this area as sort of an option for children who are differently abled or have sensory processing disorders or issues as just a different amenity from your traditional active recreation play. So that was one thing we looked at as well as some native woodland planting restorations for the canopy trees and the understory trees and plantings around the boardwalk trail, which you can see a quick sketch of in that lower photo. Do we have any questions on Penland Woods?
The only thing that I that I would add is the discussion that we had at the committee level about the sensory garden, maybe incorporating that along the boardwalk. So it's sort of a you know, walking sensory experience, not necessarily isolating it in one place as we have pictured there. So just in case anybody had any thoughts on that, that was some one of the comments, I think, that was made at the by the parks committee.
I think the sensory garden is a great idea. I'm just curious why. Is there any value to having that a higher priority level? I don't think we we have anything like that in any of our park.
Not currently. We did, I believe that was talked about at the parks and rec board meeting. We just haven't made the changes to the plans yet, but that is a good note that can certainly be switched. Any other questions on Penland Woods?
Okay, it's, oh. I'm sorry. I just, I was just reading it really quickly because I didn't see it and wanted to double check. Any recommendations for the actual existing community building as far as anything essentially?
The one thing we did recommend there was the potential to use it for like some additional programming. And one thing we talked about as a group was, you know, the slight decline that where some communities are seeing in youth sports and the potential to look at steam programming or particularly given like all the natural resources within Penland Woods, some like environmental programming, not just for kids, but adults. So there is a recommendation for that that we included.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions before we jump into Penland Park?
So you don't anticipate doing any structural work on board?
No, we did not look at or recommend anything for that. All right. So the next part we looked at and a near neighbor to Penland Woods was Penland Park. So similar to what we saw in Oxford, a lot of what we were looking at here was sort of general existing park amenity and infrastructure upgrades. There was a swing set that had some rust on it that was a higher priority for replacement. And one thing that I'll talk about when we get to overall recommendations is sort of a timeline for looking at replacing and redesigning the playground areas. Penland Woods is not the oldest and at the moment is in pretty good condition. And as Sandy mentioned, she can still get replacement parts for it. So it's not an immediate priority for replacement, but it is something that, you know, with the replacement of the swing set, we did recommend looking at a little bit further down the road. Another thing we mentioned looking at were redesigning the ball field fencing to eliminate the need for a gate and kind of create an overlap in fencing, which is shown in the upper photo. And then similar to Penland Woods, we mentioned repairing and replacing the pavilion, given the way the posts were installed. We have any questions on Penland Park?
So is there any opportunity, I guess, for the pavilion? It's the only real pavilion that we have, correct?
There are. Yes.
The pavilion? Oh, yeah.
There's a small one in Oxford.
Yeah, Nexus, Nexus. Okay.
No, 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 no. Where, how, whether they're across?
Oh, okay, out there. Okay, I guess I'm just looking for accessibility, I guess, for for the pavilions, knowing that the way the tables are set up, bolted to the floor, I know that they make it difficult for anyone who needed ADA compliance. So I just was thinking about, is there a way to ensure people with wheelchairs, people that had strollers configured in such a way?
Yeah, one, I mean, one thing to look at there, you know, if.
And if there was any specific like recommendations to configure it in such a way, but still keep the equipment safe and.
Yeah, we did not recommend anything specific to that. If I remember correctly, I think there is an ADA accessible picnic table out there. But as you mentioned, for maneuvering purposes, it may be worth, you know, looking into if the township does decide replacing the pavilion to maybe do movable site furniture that, you know, gets taken in at the end of the season so that it can be moved around. But for the moment, I believe it is meeting ADA.
Okay. And is that the only one with lights? I know that it has physical lights. I don't know how to turn them on. But I did, I do know that there is what it's there. I don't know.
Yeah.
You said what?
They're all photos.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
Like within the pavilion, you mean?
We're like, yeah.
I think with like underneath the pavilion, but not like big overt lights for the works or anything.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any other questions on Penland Park? Okay. So Ingersoll Park, we're going to kind of talk about in two parts. I'm going to talk about recommendations specific to the park first and then jump into a little discussion about the McCormick House, you know, given that it is an immediate neighbor to the park. So a lot of the recommendations we looked at for Ingersoll had to do with some basic, you know, park infrastructure upgrades. So looking at taller fencing around the baseball fields as the current height is a little low and could be a bit of a hazard. As well as looking at, you know, some of the stormwater management systems there and underground utilities to see if there are some, you know, better ways to manage that so that there aren't issues down the road. And if you could move to the next slide.
When you when you talk about fencing, you're talking about the current metal fencing or netting type stuff?
Yes, fencing around the outfield. Although we do also have a recommendation specific to looking at adding netting again for the upper part of the backstop.
To avoid balls going on.
Yes. Yep.
Yes, that's a legitimate concern.
Yeah. So we we have a recommendation for that as well. And I know Sandy had said that it had some issues with coming down in either snow or wind. So looking at something that's removable that could come up and down year to year was one thing we recommended. Another big conversation with Ingersoll that we'll get into a little bit more when we go through some of the potential next steps for the McCormick House is the potential to provide a restroom here. We sort of looked at and talked about three different potential options for a restroom. One would be to partner with the Little League to look at upgrading their existing concession stand to make it a restroom concession stand. This could fairly easily be done with a prefab building. And would also allow them to look into connecting to public sewer and upgrading some of the utilities in that area. Another option, which was shown on the previous slide, is to look at installing a prefab restroom in another section of the park. So that other option was over on Old Penland Pike. And then the third option would be to potentially, you know, depending on the historic status of the McCormick House, look at how that could be retrofitted to include public restrooms. Before I jump into the McCormick House, are there any questions about Ingersoll Park and those recommendations?
Can you just explain? I know this side of as, can you just explain prefab bathroom?
It is a building that's manufactured offsite and delivered to the site in pieces and then picked up with a crane and assembled on the site. It can, it looks like a permanent structure that was, you know, built in place. It just, it's manufactured somewhere else and brought on site. You you prep the area and it just, it gets put down.
And it's not, we're not talking about sort of a glorified.
No, architecturally, you can get them to look however you want.
Yeah, you can.
Right, I did see it. My, my, I just, you sure can't.
I'm not sure if there's a picture of it in this. The report has a picture. I don't think it's in the presentation.
Yeah.
There's one in in Wentz Run and Whit Payne by the tennis courts.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a, and it's similar bathroom and then the concession stands around the front. You wouldn't even.
That's a prefab. Really? Yeah, you would not know. Okay.
So I spoke to the fellow, I think he's been corresponding with this one, this that bathroom. He was explaining to me the difference between a vault and then just.
Yeah. So a vault is just a concrete structure that goes below below the ground adjacent to the bathroom and then your waste drains into that. And then on a periodic basis, you have that, someone comes and pumps that out. That's, it's an option, but at the same time, I think that there's an opportunity to have public sewer here via a few grinder pumps and a low pressure system to kind of be a more permanent situation and you wouldn't have to incur the cost and the maintenance of work or the coordination of having it pumped out.
Yeah. So there is the possibility of running a new sewer line?
Yeah. So there is an existing public sewer that for the Georgetown development, it all drains to the corner where Penland, Old Penland goes around the corner. And then there's a manhole right there and the the line goes underneath the the train tracks. So what we would do is we put a probably two grinder pumps on Ingersoll and they would tie in and they go across Old Penland and they would essentially, you know, tie right into that manhole and then use the public sewer system that way.
I thought that was not a possibility when you just talked about it earlier. One last word on the picture, the photographs I saw this morning, some of those little buildings, they can be made to look just like stone and match the sort of colonial style of blow with wind. So it's not really quite nice. And the, if you get prices, no.
Well, we, there's an agenda item later for a grant that we're hoping to put in to to get this project rolling. So we can talk about prices then or or now. So I probably the gentleman that you talked to at PSS this morning, I've been in contact with over the last week and a half. We've done some projects with him in other municipalities, most recently Bristol Township. And yeah, he gave me prices for the prefabricated just the restroom. It would essentially be two ADA accessible family restrooms on kind of either side. And then he also gave me a price for what that building kind of footprint that's shown up there that would incorporate the concession stand. And that's used in as the basis for the cost estimate that, you know, we're gonna, will accompany the grant application.
For $2,000 more, we can put that more fancy.
Sure. And if we are fortunate enough to get the grant and the board wishes to move forward, then we would absolutely have the discussions about what the actual outside of the bathroom would look like before we have it manufactured.
Any other questions on Ingersoll? Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and jump into the McCormick House. So given that the township owns the house now, one of the things we did while we were out on site at Ingersoll was take a quick look at the McCormick House and talk through some next steps, particularly, you know, looking at, is the house historic? Is it not historic? And if it is, is it worth listing? So I'm just going to walk through this quickly. The first step would be to engage with a historic preservation professional, essentially someone who can do a study and determine if there is any potential historic or architecturally significant features of the house. So from there, that study would answer yes or no. Does the house have historical or architectural significance? So and from there, the question would be, does community significance of the house merit further consideration of preservation? So if it's determined that yes, it does, that would be the opportunity to seek state or federal funding for renovations to the house. And there are, you know, a myriad of options that the township could look at as for what to do with it as far as opening it up to the public goes, including everything from a museum, event space, community building, as well as some of the other more utilitarian uses that we'll talk about in the next scenario. So if the house does not have historical or architectural significance, the next steps would basically be, you know, once again, to answer the question, does community significance merit preservation? So if it does merit preservation, there are still things that the township could look at doing with the house. And if it does not, that would be the point at which, you know, we could move into a discussion of should the township look at renting or leasing the house, et cetera? Are there any?
Doesn't. On the no problem with that. In addition to renting or leasing or selling the house, there's, we could, we spent a lot of money to buy it. So now we own that whole parcel. It's all ours now. We could, and assuming it doesn't have to start with significant, I suspect, that's what my conversation with many others does. Like if it didn't have to start with significant, one of the things we could do is raise. that's what my conversation with many others does, like if it didn't have to start with significance, one of the things we could do is raise it, right? We just get rid of it, use that for playground equipment or additional parking. I mean, there's other things we can do and other than lease rent or sell. I need to think that we oh, we own the whole parcel and now we're gonna give it back.
Yeah, that is certainly an option, you know, particularly if it doesn't have historical or architectural significance and you determine that, you know, the community doesn't see significance there. That's definitely also an option. Are there any other questions on the McCormick House?
So just to verify, the McCormick House next steps, really you're kind of making the suggestion that this, it, the first step is we may, need to make a determination of its historic significance, whether that exists or not. So it sounds like that would be deferring to the historic committee to make that determination and then based upon that, decide which avenue we, we need to move forward with.
Yes, essentially.
Last night about this, is there an advantage of designating it as a historic building that can be worn and measured? Or is there like more favorable situation to not have it listed?
So in a very general sense, um, if it is listed, that opens up all kinds of opportunities for funding. However, it does significantly limit the kind of rent renovations that could be made to the house. So for example, if the township did decide they wanted to include public restrooms in there and that the house was also determined to be historically significant, that could pose some problems. So in a very general sense, it's helpful in the sense that you can get more money and there are more sort of opportunities for, you know, historic programming and different things that you can do there. But it also really limits renovations if the township determines that they do really wanna, you know, look at different ways that that house could be altered to fit the use that they wanna put in there. Any other questions? So Penhamler Park is the last park we have to look at tonight. Um, so Penhamler, we really focused on um alterations that would be needed based on things that have been taken out in recent years. So seen as the retaining seating walls in the amphitheater area had come out, one of the first priorities is to look at, you know, how to rectify that situation. So in this case, we recommend grading out that slope reseating. Um, and you can see White's Road Park in Lansdale shown in the picture below as an example of sort of a graded out grass slopes that can be used um to um sort of have tiered seating for an amphitheater. Um, another item we looked at was the playground here. And as we'll talk about a little bit further down, the playground is in pretty good shape, but similar to Penland Park, um, the swing set is a little rusty and probably will need replacing in the near future. And given the age of the playground equipment, it will be something that, you know, will need to be looked at down the road for replacement and potential redesign. Um, if you could go to the next slide, another piece that we talked about um is installing a pergola for the paved area that's sort of used as the stage area for the amphitheater. Um, as well as potentially installing a pavilion, um considering the fact that this park is sort of an all-day, all-ages use for families, just making it a little more comfortable, adding some shade, potentially looking at restrooms down the road as well, um were two things we looked at here. Do you have any questions on Penhamler?
Is there, what's the feasibility of the pickleball court there? I, I ask because it's pretty isolated. It's not really in the residential neighborhood.
I believe we backed away from that one a little bit based on orientation of the basketball courts um as well as how heavily they're used. And I, I think that's where we landed.
Is the creation of a pickleball court on its own or pickleball courts on its own, is that just um cost prohibitive? That is that why you sort of re-struck the basketball court or is that a possibility as well?
I think that if you looked at a master planning situation for this park, then you could certainly look at the opportunity to put a pickleball court somewhere there. Uh, I remember wind being a, a big issue as you get up o- on top of, of the park. So it would almost have to be directly adjacent to the basketball courts to, to kind of sit down in the hollow and uh from a wind perspective, but I, I think there's some space there that, that could be looked at for sure.
Um.
I'm sorry, read that. Um, I, I, I guess, so is there, I know that there's not any drawings or, or I don't see. Is there any conversation around expanding the playground area to any degree or adding additional equipment? And then the second one is, I know that this is the only basketball court, I believe. I could be wrong, but this is the one that I know has lights. I don't know if they're functional or not. I've never seen them on. Um, and so, you know, I don't, I don't know, but off the top of my head, I don't think so. The only reason I'm asking, I don't know how familiar you are with North Wind or, or some of their outdoor basketball tournaments in the summer. And it's, it's a, a big thing. We try, I travel there almost every day of the summer. So, you know, if there would be one closer to us or if there's opportunity to even bring tournaments to our area, I think that that would be a positive thing. And it's not, again, as Mike alluded to, it's not near residential area necessarily, so it wouldn't have to uh disturb a lot of people. But that was just my about the lights and then the playground equipment.
I think the biggest problem, that would be awesome, but I think we don't have enough. Our, it's a, that's, I mean, you know, you know, those summer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's probably true. Okay, that's just a thought. Okay.
Yeah, uh, I added a note that lights to basketball courts is.
I mean, they're physically there. I can see them. I just don't know if they were. I've never seen them on.
Okay, and the expansion of the playground, you know, if, if you did a master plan of that park and you redid the playground amenities, that I think it, it's all gonna get bigger. From, from that perspective, there's just so much more stuff out there now than there was twenty years ago.
And I don't wanna be in any way, uh, like, is there anywhere we're gonna have a big, huge slide?
When we design the playgrounds, I'm gonna advocate for a slide for you, Daniel.
I mean, I, I've traveled all the way to Philadelphia to go down the Smith playground slide and.
Eighteen plus area.
And Upper Dublin has that big, huge purple side that they just got, like, like if you had, like the castle park in Doylestown with that wine beach side. If you have a good slide, they will come.
If you you redevelop a park and you re- redo the playground structures, you're going to have the same quality of amenities
Okay.
as your neighbors do. It's just that their stuff is newer than, than yours.
Okay.
And it looks like there's ninety percent or so of this is, we're gonna see grants, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, the plan is to give you guys um a roadmap and then we find the grants and we try to pri- the priorities and you go. We do one and then we check it off and we go to keep, keep, keep on rocking.
So my, my overall question, I saw how you guys have made recommendations as far as priority level. Is there any benefit for us to address the same type of project in all of the parks or does it make more sense cost-wise to address a park at a time? You know what I'm saying?
I, I personally, the way my engineering brain works, I think that like you would want to do each park a- at a certain time. That way you could make sure that like all the amenities you're redoing in those parks fit together for that space and then, you know, kind of just move on from there.
I think that makes sense too. If, you know, if you're gonna say we do all the.
All the playground.
Later, but then you're gonna have a contractor spread out from five or six different parks and you're gonna just sort of fix a little bit each time instead of fixing up the park.
And you can also learn from the planning of, you go through master planning for, say, Oxford Park and you get the community's involvement. Then you can use that same thing when you start at Penhamler and, you know, we're not kind of starting from scratch.
Okay.
And I get, you get more of a wow factor when you do the whole park and it's all brand new.
Yeah.
To the full industry.
Yeah, good point.
Is there any additional or are there any additional comments from the, or questions from the board?
I did go to a number of Ingersals during working at Park. So there's the, there's different kinds of surfaces that can be used. And I guess this is a matter of course, but there's a debate between using the port rubber and um just the, like the rubber chips.
Yeah. Emily can comment, but my, my thought is that the port in place you, is easier to utilize for, I guess, ADA surface than the, the rubber chips are. And I think the rubber chips, um, they get picked up, they get thrown, they, they get, uh, you know, they make a messy park, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in my experience, it really comes down to how much maintenance you're willing to put into it. So, you know, the mulch, well, rubber mulch is obviously a little bit more expensive than the engineered wood fiber, but it still comes down to maintaining it, making sure that you're at the right level at all the specific fall zones. Um, you know, whereas the port in place is obviously a much larger upfront cost, but does make maintenance, from what I've seen, a little easier in the long run because you're not having to constantly monitor and check levels.
The long run being about twelve years.
Yes. We do, um, are there any other questions on Penhamler? There's just one more overall slide I'll run through quickly. And we kind of already talked um about a lot of this, particularly as we're wrapping up with grants and master plans. In general, as far as master plans and looking at holistically at, you know, what needs to be done for certain parks, we recommended um prioritizing Oxford and Penhamler for master parks with Oxford being one of the higher priorities, given that the playground equipment will need replacement first. And to sort of jump right into that, as far as playground replacement goes, um, Oxford is also at the top of that list. Um, and as you can see, not given, um, you know, it's not there for the year it was installed. It's there because we're no longer able to get parts for it. Um, but from there, based on age, Penland Park and Penhamler would be, you know, next on the replacement list. And then we also included a very rough budgetary number of, you know, looking at all new equipment, all new surf scene and a redesign of that area um for, you know, what you would be looking at per park. Are there any questions on the overall recommendations?
Very well.
Appreciate it tremendously.
Yep.
Thanks to Parks and Recs for you guys.
Is there, are there any questions from the public? If you just could come up and, and state your name and your address.
I have a comment, not really a question, you know, just like, I, I'm beyond the age of spending a lot of time in the kids' playgrounds, but I was always very concerned about water, access to water fountains and shade. So I wonder if that's maybe considered, that's just.
Thank you. I don't know if there are. Okay.
Um, it looks like there are water fountains in most of the parks. Um, and we did have a couple recommendations specific to shade, adding some more trees or adding pavilions. Um, but those are very good, important thoughts for all park users for sure. So thank you for bringing it up.
Are we replacing the water fountains? Okay, so it's on our radar, Lisa. Um, I think there's someone online. Could you just state your name and, and your address?
Hi, this is Deborah Schaefer at A twenty-three Penland Pike. Um, I wanna thank uh the engineering company and the township because, for exploring all of these things because it looks very exciting and I hope that uh funding can come through. I have, um, I guess, two questions about uh the pavers in Ingersoll Park and turning the gravel, uh, I guess gravel paths into paved paths in Penland Woods. Will that affect um stormwater runoff? Does that create an issue, um, creating an impervious surface where, uh, I'm assuming that the gravel is somewhat um more forgiving than, than um the blacktop, but was that considered at all in um the consideration of, of replacing uh what's already there with something more impervious?
So there is a slight increase in stormwater runoff from a gravel trail to a paved trail. But generally speaking, uh, a trail is what we call a disconnected impervious surface, meaning that like it's only five feet wide. And so whatever falls on that just runs off to the side and then can infiltrate into the ground. Whereas like a parking lot is n- a non-disconnected impervious surface. So there's a, a lot of runoff that's generated from that. So the trails are not as big of a concern as you, you may imagine.
Well, I would, I would, I would like to comment that um the trail that runs along uh Penland Pike that I use quite frequently, uh, the runoff is not always great because maintenance is not done to uh keep the water flowing, so.
Okay, yeah, that's a, a good point. And if we were to pave the trails, then we could certainly look at some sort of stormwater management and upgrade to offset the impervious surface.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, have any comments from the public? Thank you so much. Jim, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Emily, I'm sorry, I was gonna call you Lynn. I'm sorry. Thank you so much, Emily and Jim, for the presentation. Appreciate it tremendously. Um, next up, we have McMahon with an update of the traffic evaluation on the intersection of Penland Pike and Worcester Avenue. I think that's gonna be Chad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At the, uh, I think it was the last board meeting in March, the board had authorized us to do a traffic study of the intersection of Penland Pike and uh Worcester Avenue uh to what, evaluate whether a multiway stop uh condition would be warranted for the intersection. And if, and if we found that it wasn't warranted, what other short-term and long-term improvements um could be considered at the intersection to improve and enhance safety? Um, so first to run through the multiway stop warrant analysis that we completed, um, the warrants that we evaluate are included in the state vehicle code. Uh, the primary ones that we look at are crash history, uh, traffic volumes and site distances at the intersection. And regards to the crash history, we, we looked three years back. Twenty twenty is kind of a throwaway year because of COVID, so we actually went, went four years back and reviewed the data provided by uh the chief in his department. The warrants, five crash, five reportable crashes over a twelve-month period. Over the four-year period, uh, there was only two reportable crashes. Um, so that warrant was not met. Um, in terms of traffic volumes, um, there's two components of the volume warrant, the volume warrant. One is the volume on the major street, which would be Penland Pike in this instance. And that you have to have three hundred vehicles per hour for at least eight hours out of the day. Um, that component of the volume warrant was met. The other component is the volume on the minor street, which will be Worcester Avenue in this case. And it has to be at least two hundred vehicles per hour uh for the same eight-hour period. Um, the volume warrant is not met for Worcester Avenue as, as you would probably um imagine. The third warrant uh pertaining to site distance, um, we went out and did detailed measurements and there's really two criteria that, that we took a look at and without providing the, the technical, the over-technical terms for them. One is, is what you could be, what you could refer to as the minimum um site distance that would be required for safe operating conditions um that you need to achieve. The second criteria that we look at is what I'll call a desirable um site distance. And that's above the minimum standards that you wanna try and. And that's above the minimum standards that you want to try and strive for to enhance safety to the greatest extent possible in operations at the intersection. So this table here shows the detailed measurements from our evaluation. But the the quick summary of it is, is that the site distances at the intersection meet the minimum safe stopping site distance requirements. However, they don't meet the desirable criteria. And the site distances to the left are a little bit greater than those looking to the right. And the one key thing, and you'll be able to see it a little bit more when we call up some exhibits. When we measure that site distance, we're measuring at a certain distance back from the edge of the travel lane on the major street, which is Penland Pike in this instance.
So you're saying that coming out of Worcester, there's better site distance? If you're looking left.
Correct.
Under the bridge.
Correct.
And if you're looking right because of the current.
Correct, correct. So overall, when we look at those three warrants, a multiway stop is not, does not meet the warrants in order to be implemented at the intersection. So from there, knowing that that can be done, we looked at some short term improvements, low cost improvements that could be done relatively quickly and cost effectively. And then we also just did a very general planning view of some longer term improvements that the township might want to consider planning for. So can you go to the exhibits all the way at the end, Jamie? It'll be seven, it'll be the last three pages, last three or four pages. Sorry. Okay, so the first exhibit here is the short term, low cost improvement options that we looked at. And under this scenario, we're looking at what can be done in terms of signing and pavement markings to help enhance the safety at the intersection. So what we've identified for the short term recommendations is to replace the existing intersection warning signs that are on Penland Pike that are posted both for what I'll call eastbound and westbound traffic on on or eastbound and westbound traffic on Penland Pike. To, and there's two parts to that. One is to slightly adjust the location of those intersection warning signs, but then also to increase the size of them as well, so they're more visible for drivers when they're on Penland Pike approaching the intersection. We've been recommended some things for Worcester Avenue as well. One related to pavement markings where we would move the stop, put an actual stop bar on Worcester Avenue close to the edge of the travel lane on Penland Pike. And also put a white dashed line along Penland Pike through the intersection area. And and the purpose of those pavement markings would be, and I think most people probably already do it today, but to give people a visual that encourages them to pull up as far as they can to get the best site distances looking both to the left and right before they pull out of Worcester Avenue. Also recommending a double yellow line between Penland Pike and the entrance to the to the parking lot for the ball fields, just to better delineate where the two way traffic should be on West Worcester Avenue through that area. So these improvements here, again, they're just pavement markings and signs that we think can can help enhance things out there, hopefully make one, people on Penland Pike more aware that there could be traffic entering from Worcester Avenue. But then also to encourage the folks trying to exit Worcester Avenue to to position their vehicle in the most optimal place to get the best site distances. So these are, you know, something that could likely be done by Fred and his group in Public Works. If the township wants to pursue these short term recommendations, since Penland Pike's owned by Montgomery County, we would have to discuss them with the Road and Bridges Department, provide a copy of our study and ask for them to approve as is or provide any additional recommendations that they may have. On these type of things, even though it's a county road, these type of improvements, the county requires that the municipality pay for the installation and the the improvements and assume maintenance responsibilities going forward afterwards. Sure. There, yes, there would be. There's already one that we would adjust the location of it and also increase the size. So that would be, I'll call it on the the west side of the railroad overpass. Any questions on the short term? Okay, then we then we took a real high level planning, look at some potential long term solutions. And this would be some some different options. These, this would be a larger project, much bigger costs associated with it, engineering and permitting process. And this would be to achieve those desirable site distances that I mentioned a little bit earlier. One potential alternative is to realign the, well, let me start first on Worcester Avenue. We could look at options such as what's depicted on this exhibit is to restrict it to write in, write out only movements. Another alternative might be to make Worcester Avenue one way going from Penland Pike to Old Penland Pike to cut down on some of the movements at the intersection. If you do that, then you're going to redirect, you're going to redirect traffic onto Old Penland Pike up to the Penland Pike intersection, which would likely require a realignment of that intersection to make the three approaches come in more at 90 degree angles. This is one possible alignment option where you would bring the leg of Penland Pike in more to the 90 degree angle. Another alternative could be to realign Old Penland Pike to have it come in as a more of a 90 degree angle with with Penland Pike. And then we'd have to do warrant analysis, but the we would also look at whether signalization of the intersection would be required as well. Can you go to the next one?
I just, I just have one question. I'm sorry, for the for the first short term solution, it, are you widening the actual approach of Worcester to Penland Pike?
No.
So where the dotted line is and where the plus and the little, that's not wide, it's already that wide, like to the right?
No, there's already a sort of a wide radius on that corner of the intersection. So we wouldn't be doing any additional paving. Be all within the existing paved.
It just encourages people to move up more, right? It's no line right there. It's hard to tell how far up you should go before you're in the other.
In the line, yeah. No, it just looks wider to the right. I mean, I generally make a left, so I don't have an idea. But it just looked like it was more space.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. The other option we looked at in terms of of a long term improvement, what you see here is, we talked about earlier, the site distances looking to the right from Worcester Avenue being less. And we didn't, we didn't look at anything, any improvements to improve site distance to the left because we just assumed the railroad overpass isn't going anywhere. So again, this focuses on the site distances looking to the right, which which are shorter. And this would involve removing a portion of the embankment along on the side of Penland Pike next to the parking lot for the ball fields. This improvement would get you in the area of that desirable site distance that I mentioned earlier. This improvement, though, would require a retaining wall. And as you can see on the exhibit here, it very likely would reduce, at least by a few spaces, the amount of parking spaces in the parking lot for the ball fields, which isn't big now. So that that might be an impact that that's that's not desirable. So those, those are just two options that, like I said, that we looked at from a high level planning perspective. You know, going forward, that's just, you know, something we can continue to consider further. And if the township's interested in, you know, evaluating those more, again, we would engage Montgomery County Roads and Bridges to get their thoughts on alternatives and whether, you know, anything should be taken forward for more detailed design or conceptual design work and putting together some ballpark cost estimates and those kind of things. This type of improvement, you know, it's it's going to be at the level where you're going to be looking to pursue grants to implement them.
So I just, out of curiosity, how long does it typically take to hear back from the county once you kind of make the suggestions that we would like to pursue it? To get their feedback, is this a six month, nine month, a year?
I I think if, you know, we can submit the the study to them after the meeting this evening and ask them first to take a look at the short term recommendations. Due to it being very minor in scope, you know, I don't want to pin the mend a exact review time, but, you know, based on prior experience, I would likely 30 to 60 day review period for them to get back to us. They're very busy, as you could imagine, with with all their bridge projects and some of the larger roadway projects that they're doing in other places in the county. But that's typically a reasonable review time for them, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Chad from the board? Are there any questions from public? Thank you so much, Chad. Next up on the agenda, we have Resolution 202211. A resolution of lower going to town to Montgomery County Supreme, the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States semi quintessential. Question mark. Whereas the public, whereas the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Governor Wolf created the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi Quintennial America 2050 PA in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States in 2026 and Pennsylvania's integral role in that event and the impact of its people on the nation's past, present and future. And it goes on from there. It is on, it is on the screen. I think we're trying to be very proactive in planning. So this resolution just officially recognizes the programs, projects and events over the next five years to inspire future leaders and celebrate all of Pennsylvania's contribution to the United States of the past 250 years. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Given that, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 202211 in support of the Pennsylvania's Commission of the United States Semi Quintennial?
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, resolution does pass. Next up is Resolution 202212 submission of grant for park improvements in Ingersoll Park. I think Jim alluded to this resolution before. Do you want to get up and talk anything about the resolution? Or do you want me to just run through it? I can just run through it. Okay, so this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors for Lower going at Township Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, authorizing official action related to the submitting of a Montgomery County Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Program Request for the Ingersoll Park Infrastructure Project. All of the identified language, I guess, is not up on the screen, so I will read it. Whereas the County of Montgomery through the County Recovery Office is accepting Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery SLRF Program Request in April 2022 for projects deemed in the interest within Montgomery County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Essentially, what we are doing in Lower going at Towntip, and we we've done this in coordination with the contract bid grant consultant and our engineering firm is identify projects for us to request money from the county. And specifically, we've identified funding for $335,880 from the Montgomery County Recovery Office for the construction of the Ingersoll Park Infrastructure Improvement Project. We designated Craig McAnally, our Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between Township and the county and the grant making agency to facilitate an assistant obtaining, receiving and administrating the result requested grant. There's a lot more wherés is in future resolves, but essentially what we're doing is making this request to authorize the board and and Craig to move forward with this grant application. Are there any questions from the board?
This is specifically for the.
Ingersoll Infrastructure Project. And it's the ARPA funding.
Right. The Ingersoll Infrastructure Project, the bathrooms and the concession stand.
Yes.
This is just a.
This is. So the things that we talked.
We got to be competitive here.
So in the in the strategic plan that we talked about earlier in the evening, as we identified the the water, the sewer hookup related to the concession stand in the restroom, this is a formal request to have, you know, an application for that funding to complete that project. Are there any additional questions from the board?
Is there any type of match or this is?
There is no match.
And any strings attached?
There are no strings.
And how do we arrive at this, at this number, $335,000?
I got quotes from the prefabricated building contractor. And I got a few quotes from sanitary sewer contractors that that we work with on a regular basis. So that was the basis for it.
Thank you.
So so does that mean we've already decided?
No, it doesn't. Yeah. It means that the biggest structure that you're going to put there would be the combined concession stand and bathroom. So we based the cost estimate on that because that's the most expensive thing. In the event that we got the funding and you went through a community planning and input process and, you know, it took comments from the Little League in the consideration and there was some other alternative that they wanted there, like the singular bathroom in the outfield to not be incorporated with the concession stand that we could pivot and it would just be a cheaper alternative.
So the money doesn't, it's not set in stone, what it's going to spend. There's some flexibility.
In my experience with grants, there is flexibility, yes.
And and then how long? If you get the money, how long until it has to be spent?
Maybe it's two years.
Yeah, I think that that's correct.
Are there any additional questions from the board?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. We wind up deciding that it's going to be a sort of combo of restroom and concession stand. Obviously, the township has so much responsibility for the cleaning, I suspect, the restrooms. But as far as the concessions stand goes, that strikes me as if it would be the way it's that, which is literally it's carried. And I'm of the mind, given historically, the townships, just sort of the nature of the township and what we do, that we're not particularly adept at maintaining property. And I would suggest that as long as we have a reputable, responsible third party, nonprofit, like the Little League, that's going to take responsibility for maintaining its part of it. This is a great plan. Can the extended pause on the township to do it? It would be important, in my. As long as some, as long as a third party will be contractually obligated, that would make sense to me.
And I will say, just to add to that, I've spoken with one of the members of the Little League and just to preview, you know, this idea for him. And they're super supportive and greatly appreciative of all the work that we're doing, trying to to move this project along. So the idea of a concession stand as well, given the current state of their concession stand was kind of an added asset and bonus that they thought. So thank you for all of your hard work on this, Jim.
Thank you so much.
The Little League is a, is a willing and able partner in a contract.
Thank you for your. Thank you for your comment. Are there any comments from the public? Anybody online? So what we have before us is resolution number twenty twenty two twelve, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, Lower Gwinnett Township, Montgomery County, P A, authorizing official action related to. Submitting a Montgomery County Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Program Request for the Ingersoll Park Infrastructure Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. And thank you to the Park and Rec and, and the Park and Rec Committee for. Going out and touring all of the parks and bringing this back to us.
We had a good time.
Yeah. Next up, we have the appointment of the C triple A liaison for the Lower Gwinnett Township. Um, I think this is going to be under the EMS Committee.
Yes, um, it is. Tessie and I, the two members of the Emergency Management Services Subcommittee is pleased to present. George Waldron as our liaison to the Community Ambulance Association of Ambler. Um, we have the pleasure of his presence here tonight. Um, so I'm going to throw it to George.
And Mr., is it Mr. Walden?
George actually worked as a dispatcher here in Lower Gwinnett many years ago. He currently works as a police dispatcher down in Upper Dublin. Um, so he's got a bit of a history with the township and he also served as a volunteer driver. With um, the Ambu- Ambulance Association some years ago and is a lifetime member. Um, and he's very excited to be involved and I'll speak for myself and Tessie, we're excited to have you. So if you just want to come up, maybe and. Have a word or two. I have to put you on the spot, but.
No, no problem. Good evening. I um, reside in Penland and I shall also note Paul was a dispatcher at Upper Dublin when I was dispatcher here at Lower Gwinnett. Back in the eighties, so I'm real, I'm real excited to get back involved. Um, Amblerland Month means a lot to me. I was there for ten years. Um, as an EMS driver and um, got up many times in the middle of the night and missed a lot of sleep and um, because I live around here. Uh, the good news and the bad news is I got to help people directly who I knew from Ambler, Lower Gwinnett, with pain in the upper Dublin. So happy to be involved, happy to uh, present on behalf of the ambulance uh, reports back to you as far as what they're doing, what's going on. So thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you, Miss Hossiger, for being with me also.
Thank you so much for coming forward. So before we um. Congratulate any, before we go any further with the congratulations, I think we need to make an official motion.
You're right. I make a motion to appoint George Waldron, Lower Gwinnett resident as liaison to the Community Ambulance Association of Ambler.
Is there a second? All the, are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Walden.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm sure the pleasure will be ours. Um, next up, we have consideration of cleaning proposal for Alpat Complete Maintenance to Clean Penland Woods Building. Um, I think I believe it Township Manager, do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Alpat Cleaning. Complete Maintenance, Alpat Complete Maintenance gave us a proposal. They uh, are the cleaning uh, service that uh, performs the uh, service. Uh, the cleaning services here at the township. They uh, we were asked to get proposals for Penland Woods Building. Um, although it was kind of tough to get proposals, they did provide a proposal for um. For the year, it would be six hundred and fifty dollars a month. And how it's broken down, which is why what was difficult to get some other proposals was. In May and June, it's four times a week. In July through September, it's five times a week. And then October to April, it's only one time a week, so. The, them with the relationship they already have here, they do, they were able to give us a proposal. At six hundred and fifty dollars a month, seven thousand eight hundred dollars a year. And we just like consideration to uh, move forward with their services.
Are there any questions from the board? I guess my only question is, how many uh, cleaning entities? Put in um, or, or gave feedback as far as the cost?
Um, zero, other than Alpat.
Alright.
And like I said, it's very, it's a difficult. Proposal that we're putting out there. It's, you know, one time a week and for what, seven months? Five times a week for the other three months and four times for the last two, so.
And Alpat has a relationship with us, so I guess that's why they consider.
And I think the difficult schedule, it's just based off how the building is used and so we wouldn't have somebody come daily if the building's not being used, correct? So I think that's why.
Well, yeah, the schedule, yeah.
Yeah.
Is Alpat the company that services the township?
Yes.
And would somebody take responsibility from the township to make sure that Alpat is doing what it's supposed to be doing? Most of, most particularly in the Little League, when it's, you know, in the summer, but someone's not doing it.
Yeah, we have Rich Miles, who's the building maintenance uh, person here at the building. He reviews all the cleaning at the building here and he would. Continue, he would do it down at Penland Woods as well. No, that, that was during COVID when it was shut down and the requirement was that. Uh, if someone went into the restroom, it had to be cleaned right away. Um, which is why we didn't have a person to do that. This would not avoid, no one's going to be, there's no one standing in the bathroom for everyone. This is when it's not being used, it's getting cleaned then. So the bathrooms will be open as it was in two thousand nineteen. So it was only closed because of COVID and the requirements that they were providing to public restrooms.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Anybody online? No. So what we have before us is um. I guess a proposal for Alpat Complete Maintenance to Clean Penland Woods Building. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, next, we have a request for staff to obtain estimates related to a cost and updating the properties at. Four oh nine Old Penland Pike, um, known as the McCormick House and eleven oh five Old Bethune Pike. This is brought up by Supervisor McNeely, so you want to take that, Tessie?
Yes, um, so the energy in maybe the EAC more broadly have been interested in place to. Uh, establish some demonstration projects and educational projects for the public and. Uh, the, the thought about the Ingersoll House came up, uh, that it was currently, currently being used and there's um, space around it to accommodate. For example, solar panels or whatever other projects that EAC may, may have in mind. Uh, and so um, in thinking about the building, since it hasn't been occupied in a while. Um, we thought that there need to be an evaluation of the structural integrity of the building and just see what needs to be done to it to. To make it usable. And if we're going to look at that building, then we may as well look at the McCormick building also and uh, and evaluate what. What level of uh, work would need to be uh, put into the, the buildings to um, to bring them up to the point where they're. Um, that they can be occupied by either the township or lease or whatever the case may be, but specifically for the Ingersoll property, we would like to have a space for the. Energy committee and probably some of the EAC demonstration projects also.
Would this include the bar as well as the house?
Uh, sure. I, I, I'm not saying the discussion tonight is not to go forward or not go forward with renovating the properties, but you have to get an understanding of what's needed. Before you can launch that next step, so um, if there is the possibility to use that barn for something for the township, then we should evaluate it as well.
I guess the major concern that I have is that I know that these are the priorities of the Historic Committee. But they identified them in their initial meeting as the two priorities that they were going to undertake, at least initially. Um, whether to make a determination if they're historic or not. And then based upon that determination of them being historic or not, and then to move forward with actual application to identify them as historic properties. Before we would get to the part of evaluating them for use, we would have to make a determination if they are historic and if we wanted to then apply. For them to be identified as on the National Register and if doing so, that would preclude certain renovations, constructions or uses of, of those buildings, but first it sounds like. Man, I appreciate the Energy Committee's enthusiasm as far as trying to think of all options as it relates to our current existing properties we own. But I know at least the McCormick House without a question um. Is documented and was taken Historic Society. They had an open house this past Saturday or Sunday. Um, and actually both properties are listed there, but the McCormick House is more identified and. The history, you know, being historic as opposed, opposed to an older building. Because the Ingersoll House was built in nineteen oh nine and didn't have any identif- identifying factors that they were aware of, of it being historic. Nevertheless, the Historic Committee identified that these are the two buildings that they were going to take on initial, at least initially. Um, with making a determination of if they were historic or not, so I think that that would be the first step prior to structural soundness or um, exploring use for the Energy Committee.
Certainly, you know, several committees probably are interested in the properties and I don't see that it's exclusive that one should. Explore consideration or cooperation by the other committees.
Well, I think his, being it, being historic, and this is just my opinion because I'm not a historian. But I think being historic in and of itself does preclude at least the initial look at it because if you are going to go through the process, and I think. Emily actually identified the kind of question ears as, as how you want to move forward with the McCormick House if we're going to move forward and identifying that this is a historic property. And potentially put it on the National Register, we can't go through a process of construction or identifying uses before we go through that process first. I think there has to be a hierarchy of. How you pursue it.
When I. But when I spoke to Jim about this, he suggested uh, to me that we use the same flow chart. So, you know, I have no problem with that. I, I just, you know, we, we were anxious to uh, get started on that because we had. Some solar projects in mind and so that was the first. Step to, to get started, so I don't want to preclude the Historic Commission Committee uh, from, from their consideration.
What, what sort of solar projects are talking about?
Well, uh, we, we're thinking about a solar um, canopy uh, for one thing. There might be also just uh, solar panels on. But I think the idea is to demonstrate to the public the different ways that solar can be incorporated to generate power for your homes. And, and so that seemed to be. A place where we could set that up, but there, there's been, since the discussion has started, I, I'm sure there's been like ten or twelve different suggestions for how to use the property. In terms of education, so um, there's, you know, there's seven, eight, I think, and so there's plenty of room. To, to have native plantings, historic plantings around the historic building. You know, have space inside for any other committees. Uh, I think these two buildings that we own are very. Very nice for the township to have and, you know, I, I think everybody's excited about getting to use them, so.
I, I mean, I appreciate that. Oh, go ahead.
I can't share the excitement. Uh, and I'll tell you why. Who's going to maintain the buildings once we have them?
Maintain them now. We just approved the budget to replace the roof and feathers.
So we are not maintaining the buildings in any way. We're happy for the last ten years. Those are, I swear, a complete disrepair. We're not maintaining them.
Well, we're doing some amount of in- investing to keep them. Upright. I, I, I can't comment on the school. We just bought, I mean, the, the other house, the McCormick House, because we just bought it.
I'm talking about the Ingersoll House.
Okay.
Well, I'm just, you, you, you want us to spend money to talk about, you want us to spend money to determine what it's going to cost to rehab the houses? And then once the house is a rehab, who's going to maintain the house? What's the plan?
There, there is no plan.
So why would you spend money now?
I'm not suggesting to spend a lot of money. What I'm suggesting is. Before we do anything to the properties, if we want to evaluate. If it's, you know, worth the township's money uh, to rent, to put in the renovations, the first step is to have the buildings evaluated. Or um, just like before you buy a house, you would want to have evaluated. So um, that was the thought, just to get started and um, see if the. If the building is not structurally sound, we shouldn't be putting wood on it, is the first thing, but um, to see how um, how much work and investment would be required. If we want to maintain those buildings. My discussion tonight is not. What we're going to use the buildings for ultimately, but rather to get an idea of costs associated with. Make, with bringing them back to the point where they're usable.
I, I did make the suggestion that you could use the float, you could essentially just cross out McCormick House flow chart and it could be Ingersoll House flow chart because at the end of the day, it's a very similar. Situation where it's a board policy decision on what you guys want to do with it. I wonder if uh, once you engage a historic preservationist, if they couldn't. Gi- give a comment on what the cost would be to rehab it just from a, you know, their institutional knowledge standpoint, without needing to have it essentially evaluated. From a structural standpoint, unless you said, not that uh, historic person tells you it's a million dollars and you just, you say no way. There's no reason at that point to say, you know, what would the bones of it need to be to get to that million dollars?
Do you have a sense of what are the costs to retain somebody to make that evaluation?
I, I don't know.
So I just want to, I just want to say, if we go with, to it from the aspect of being historic. Then I reached out to the National Registry just around the McCormick House specifically and what their steps in programming. Involved, they do send somebody out to evaluate the structure and the soundness of the structure. They do make recommendations as far as what the renovations and what the construction would cost. They explicitly tell you what you can and can't do and what the use can and can't be. Um, I believe that we would be responsible for paying for part of that evaluation, but they would tell us, they also make the. Uh, they, they lay out how you have to identify the building in, in order to determine if it's historic or if it's just an old building. Um, and then that kind of tells you which way you need to go.
Part of that evaluation could be, is potentially subsidized because that's a state agency that's doing the evaluation.
And there's grant funding and other things related to part of doing that evaluation. I just wanted to be clear as to if we go the historic route and we use the Historic Committee for its purpose and it's the formation of it. They could identify, you know, what one they wanted to prioritize. I know that they did both, but how they wanted to move forward and.
And I think two of our members on the Historic Committee are also on the Was Taken, are also members of the His- Was Taken Historical Society. I think they're actually board members there as well. Um, and so they're very familiar with the process and sort of all of the um, opportunities that we can take to engage in sort of free or subsidized services to do those types of evaluations, so I. So I think that would be helpful.
It is one is to say that I know that we did identify in our budget, replacing a roof, and I think there was a window? And gutters? Gutters. Roofs and gutters a- at the Ingersoll House. And then I thought at the McCormick House it had to do with the floor? Oh, it was the roof as well. Okay. I mean, we did, we- we identified it, we authorized and we budgeted for it, but we didn't authorize the use of the money yet. So it's budgeted for, meaning we put the money aside in our document. But we haven't moved forward with getting estimates or actually beginning the bid. Yes. But we haven't done that yet.
Well, I- I guess I heard that the proposal was going out and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, we would still have to vote to approve it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's what I meant by it hasn't gone out yet. But did that clear up? I mean, I know that you had questions or concerns about moving forward. I mean, are you okay? I mean, I'm just really just asking with the understanding that the historic committee is kind of taking the lead with the McCormick House and the Ingersoll House as far as, and it doesn't preclude the EAC from thinking about it.
No, and I'm also one of the supervisor liaisons on the EAC. I'm, Tessie and I worked together on that and I've spoken with, with Lisa and with Ree. And I think it's great to continue the dialogue amongst the committees because the energy committee in particular does have some really great, um, ideas, I think, for, for using these properties. So, of course, I think the more ideas, the better, um, in terms of use. But I think step one is, are we going to go in the flow chart? Are we going to designate this as historic and are we going to go through that, that left side of the flow chart, um, before we get to what, how we would use the property?
And the answer to that is yes, we are going to do that. We're going to start that side of the flow chart.
We're gonna, right, we are going to start the analysis of whether or not it's historic and then whether or not we want to then designate it as historic. Because as Jim mentioned, or maybe it was Emily, you are restricted in sort of the construction. Yes, if it's historic, so.
So is that something that the historic committee is going to start actively working on? Do you have like a timeline? Do you have a?
So we just had one meeting, um, and.
But I'm sure you have to engage certain professionals.
Yeah, we're still, we have to come up with our enabling ordinance and then the board has to approve that and approve sort of our set of priorities. So that will be, that's our next move. Um, but it's a high priority for the committee.
That's, that is great. I think that, um, you know, the, the parts in red, in fact, you know, you're on a map and you didn't have to kind of look at that, that this property exists.
What's on our park store?
So.
Because there's a residential home. I mean, it used to be a school and that's part of what we need to investigate as far as the historic. Oh, okay, that makes sense. Oh, yeah, that was just a home. I'm sorry.
But that's some residential that.
And is it seven acres? I didn't know seven acres.
Seven point three three.
I think we was re-chiming in recent Ingersoll. Ree, how, how big is it, did you say?
It's seven point three three acres.
Seven acres?
Yes, seven point three three. Of course, that encompasses the, the barn, the building, the pond area, the landscape, the lawn area.
Okay. Okay.
Could you comment just to let the board know the, in case they don't know the history of the work that's gone into the property, uh, by the Green Committee?
Sure, certainly. Um, so the Gwenna Green Committee, prior to EAC designation, we u- utilized the space for, um, multiple community events, native tree plantings. We had Mike McGrath from Betua Garden, um, offer a presentation. We had hands-on demonstration about tree care, native plants. We conducted a very large, um, successful stormwater management day. And community opportunity to help with rain garden planting, to learn about rain gardens, rain barrels, how to construct, how to build, benefits. So this has been going on for years and it's just a wonderful, um, opportunity. Back in two thousand and sixteen, the township was awarded a Growing Greener Grant, um, that I worked with the previous township engineer and DEP. And we promoted, um, naturalizing stormwater basement basins that are in Springhouse Farms. They had the low-flow channels rated adjacent from the development. So they were naturalized along with township, um, basins, two additional basins, and the installation of a rain garden. And the thought was that we put together a long-term proposal for landscaping, for, um, maintenance of that property to include riparian buffers, native glant, uh, gr- um, native plantings, pollinator gardens. So we worked with DEP for, for several years and we were finally funded. And I just think there's a great opportunity for community programming, for community space. So I- I put together an overview of all of our accomplishments and the way we have utilized the, the landscape, the, um, not the building, of course, but the, um, the grounds, and I just think it's a great opportunity moving forward.
Thank you so much, Ree. We appreciate it. So there's no motion, I guess, to move forward at this point. We're going to let the historic side or historic committee. Take the lead at least initially.
That sounds great. I think the, you know, the more people involved, the more things along with it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next up, um, is authorization to advertise lower one is proposed anti-discrimination ordinance. We're putting forth an ordinance to amend the code of lower one township adding part sixteen to provide for the creation of the lower one township Human Relations Commission and to prohibit discrimination in housing, commercial property, employment, public accommodations based upon actual or perceived race, color, national origin, immigration status, ancestry, religious creed, age, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, veteran status, marital status, familial status, genetic, genetic information, handicap or disability, and use of an assisted animal, providing definitions and providing penalties. There's a lot that I have to say about this, but it is eight forty-five. So I will keep it brief. Um, I think we really just can't rely on the state to ensure full protection for the LGBT community and, um, lower one. Currently, a gay couple can be refused service at a restaurant. A person can be fired for being trans if they're employed by a company with less than fifteen people. And an employ- and, um, a landlord can refuse to rent to a family with two moms. Um, this ordinance is going to fill in those gaps where the state and federal law does not provide those protections. This is for the advertisement of this ordinance. Are there questions from the board?
Um, so certainly that's a worthy cause and we don't want to see discrimination for anybody or any, any of these protected classes. But, um, I feel that the law regarding anti-discrimination against the LGBT community has shifted substantially since the Supreme Court decision in twenty twenty in, um, Bostock, I think it was called. Bostock, um, thank you. Where, um, the justices expanded the definition of sex under, as defined under Title VII to include transgender, gender identity, homosexuality, et cetera. And since that decision in twenty twenty, the jurisprudence in the common law has moved in a way to incorporate that same reasoning in the, in the Third Circuit, various district courts, to Title IX, to housing, to, uh, you know, the other areas of federal and state anti-discrimination and civil rights statutes. And, um, presently, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission is considering a rule to amend the dev- or define sex to fall into alignment what, with what the Supreme Court has done and all circuit courts and district courts ensuing that same rationale. Um, it's part, currently in public comment. It mirror, it mirrors the Supreme Court's, uh, definition of sex and, uh, public comment is scheduled to end on May ninth, uh, with the final rule scheduled to be presented at, at the end of June. So I think that, um, the, that, that will be a moot issue, um, imminently within the next month or so. And will make, um, what we're doing here really not necessary and basically duplicative of, um, what the state provides.
So what would be the harm? So that is duplicative. What's the harm?
And I'll just add also that we, before the state and the federal government, there's been an Equality Act and, you know, a state equivalent. It's never been adopted and I just don't think we can rely on the state or the federal government. Bostock is a great start, um, but it's limited to Title VII. Um, and while the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and while our governor and while our president have currently said they would like to extend that, um, and some of the courts, as you mentioned, have done that as well, it's not law. And so I think it's important, while we wait for the state and the federal government to protect the rights of everybody, that we take a stand here in Lower Guen and like most of our neighbors have done a long time ago and state to our community, um, that we value these protections. Um, everybody's welcome here. Everybody's protected here. Everybody's safe here. And I- I- I just don't think we can wait any longer. So that's all I have to say.
Well, of course, but as I said, the state is, um, making movement on this with the, uh, rule being issued by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. And as far as the harm, there, or what's the, what's the benefit, what's, what's the benefit? That is the question. So the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission currently has, um, similar processes, actually more rigorous processes in, in, installed. They've been in process for a couple decades whereby their investigative abilities are much more rigorous than we can do here in the Lower Guen Township. They have subpoena power for witnesses, for documents. Um, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission can actually render a decision and an order, granting a complaint to any kind of civil or equitable remedy. And it would be enforceable. Under lower Guenitz, uh, this proposed, uh, ordinance, it's mediation. So mediation is a good thing. It brings parties together. It definitely fosters understanding between adversaries, if that's what they end up being. But mediation is not enforceable. And we can enforce, enforce, uh, a settlement. It's not even a settlement. It's, it's a mediation where the parties walk away, thinking that they're both whole, but that doesn't bind either of the parties to follow through with what they've agreed to. So it's really not binding. It's really not enforcing, enforcing. And so really ultimately doesn't help a lower Guenit township who alleges that they're a victim of discrimination whereby if they go through the Pennsylvania Human Rights Commission, they have teeth, they have rigorous processes, they have professionals, and they ha- they can enforce any kind of order that is brought down between the parties. So I think when you look at from the perspective of a lower Guenit resident who's alleging discrimination as a member of the LGBTQ community, we can't provide them the same kind of perfect, uh, protection and remedy that the state currently has with its much more immense resources and enforceability provisions. So I think it is better for our residents to have the rigorousness and the established, um, success that the Pennsylvania Relations Commission has shown over the past few decades.
I think, I think Neil can correct me if I'm wrong. Obviously, he, he drafted this, um, piece of, of legislation. But I think if the party's mediation is not successful, the party is permitted to proceed. In fact, the matter, I think, has to be referred to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. So you're not removing the right of, of a lower Guenit resident to, um, to receive, you know, to go through that, that process. And again, my concern really is I wish the state expressly protected, you know, the LGBTQ community. But they don't right now. The, 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 the commission is accepting the complaints and adjudicating them because they have taken the position that they are going to interpret the word sex to be expansive. But that can change. I mean, we get a different governor in and that can change. Um, it's, it's not written in the law. And so I, I think that that's why, um, it's important that we do what we can in Lower Guenit to, to, you know, make the statement to the community, um, that we stand for this cause and then to also provide this avenue of relief, um, where we're expressly, you know, defining, the, the large community that we feel deserves protection.
And I'll also note that mediation often results in an agreement that's binding by the parties and it's enforceable. So while the mediation itself is non-binding, those things often result in binding agreements.
Well, the language of this ordinance doesn't mention any binding agreements or, uh, enforceability.
That's something I could come out of the mediation. Wouldn't prohibit it.
No, but I don't think we can, um, we can, uh, demand it as well. But again, mediation, unless, you're right, Mike, there's a settlement agreement and a release, it's just non-binding and it doesn't, it doesn't move forward the victim, the, the complaint, where it's guaranteed that they're going to, they're going to get the relief either way, you know, for the respondent or for the complaint through the processes that have been in place for decades in the state. So I, I really think that we are, any lower Guenit resident would be better served through the processes that are already in place. And we are poised as a state through the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission in June to have this final rule that will, um, prohibit this kind of discrimination.
But it doesn't that have to be adopted by the Pennsylvania legislature?
It does.
I mean, they have to, they can't make law. So that's, that's my concern would be the holdup in the legislature, like the Equality Act has been held up since, I mean, no, the first time it was proposed, but a very long time ago.
For the past sixteen years.
It's an administrative law.
For the past sixteen years in the state legislature of the General Assembly, there has been, or sessions, anti-discrimination ordinance, and it has not passed. It has not come up from a vote. It has not been voted out of committee. So Pennsylvania has the ability to and has been, um, silent on the passage of legislation, which is why municipalities have, um, taken on the consideration themselves. So Pennsylvania does not protect for sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression explicitly. Um, so this is lower Guenit taking that stance and identifying to our community, to our youth, that we are accepting.
Yes, there's, there's no question.
And then, and it's the establishment of a HRC, which I would hope that we'd never have to use. But if we do have to use it, does offer mediation, which could result in a binding contract. And then it also gives them the requirement that if they can't reach a resolution, they go to the state's HRC. So all that being said, is there any additional comments? From supervisors? Are there any comments from the public? If you could come up and state your name and your address? Are there any comments online? No. So what we have before us is, let me just get the resolution. A motion to advertise. Thank you. I'm sorry, it's not hot. Um, motion to advertise an ordinance to amend the code of lower Guenit township adding part sixteen to provide for the creation of the lower Guenit Township Human Relations Commission and to prohibit discrimination in housing, commercial property, employment, and public accommodation based upon actual perceived race, color, national origin, immigration status, etc. status, history, religious creed, age, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, veteran status, marital status, familial status, genetic information, handicap or disability, use of assistance, animal, and prohibiting definitions and providing penalties. Is there a motion?
I will proudly make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nein.
The motion carries four to one. Thank you. On to Public Works and the Sale of Our Retired Vehicles. Fred, we're having a contest. How fast can you do this?
I just want to get rid of some vehicles and equipment that's no longer used. In my memo that I sent to you, I asked for the May 10 meeting. I'd ask, since we didn't have the last meeting, that'd be the second meeting in May. I'll present the bids and you can approve the sale of the equipment.
Okay, so it's for permission to advertise and receive bids and sell the items listed below on Unisabid. It's the 2015 Chevy Tahoe, the 2013 Ford Explorer, 2004 Case Backhoe, and the miscellaneous obsolete photography equipment?
Yes, the chief.
Okay.
Was, he had some stuff that he.
I just like.
Asked me to advertise to get.
Okay. No, no, it sounds good. So this is just asking for permission to advertise. Are there any questions from the board?
No.
Are there any questions from the public? Anything online? Is there a motion to allow the Park Public Works Department to advertise the one, two, three, four items listed?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Fred. Next up is consideration for the EAC to purchase seed packets to distribute at community events. I think we have a memo from the EAC chairs that kind of outlines the initiative. Actually, it's from Ray Monahan. And it's around the educational program. And this first initiative talks about native plants.
And seeds.
And it identifies, thank you, Ray, for the assist, and the seeds. It's talking about giving away one seed packet per family for residents attending the following programs. And the first one is the Amberboro EAC Fall Fest or Earth Fest, I'm sorry, which is this upcoming Saturday, April 30th. So the preference, and they gave their preferences specified of the spotted land room slide swatters and perhaps a small number of seed packets, one per family at first from first year. In addition, the second distribution would be at the Pike Fest and the date is too late for the 2022 grow season, however, the seeds remain viable for 2023.
Correct.
The total amount
would bring it down to $550. Is that accurate?
$555 with the tax exempt form submitted along with our order. So, and we're also receiving a 40% discount based on the number of seed packets. So it brings the price down significantly.
The original price is $588.30 with that tax exempt form and the discount is bringing it down to a total of $550.
$555, correct.
Of EAC and LGBT logo as well, the plant or overview of planning instructions that are going to be handled out with each seed packet. Is there any question from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve consideration for the EAC to purchase seed packets to distribute at community events?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second up is the consideration for the EAC to purchase materials for marking 60 storm drains throughout the township. It's the Storm Drain Medallion labeling and it is going to be implemented summer 2022 or fall 2022, 60 markers, four tubes of adhesive, $150 plus shipping. They're partnering with the Delaware Estuary and providing for the cost for a specific number of medallions and adhesive required to adhere to the storm drain. They would like to purchase 60 and four tubes of adhesive. Are there any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion.
Wait, let's just ask the public and see if they have any questions. Is there any, are there any comments or questions from the public? Ms. Hudson?
I love this idea. I make a motion to approve the purchase.
So we have, we're approving the purchase of 60 storm drains and medallions and four tubes of adhesive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Most in carries. Next up is consideration for the EAC to engage in the services of the Communication Solutions Group to conduct a survey on environmental priorities. It's written somewhat into parts. I think the initial request is that they are asking to commit up to $9,000 of this 2022 budget to implement a community-wide survey of environmental priorities that will shape the EAC's effort over the next few years. The base cost is $4,500. To develop, distribute, and analyze results of a residential survey is laid out in the attached Environmental Priorities Stakeholder Survey quote, an authorization to spend up to an additional $4,500 for totals $9,000 to allow us to expand our outreach strategies to reach participation rates and to conduct a form to do the business survey regarding plastic bag restrictions. They've outlined five key points. Are there any questions from the board?
Do we have a timeframe on this? Yeah, generally. Did you start working on the questions at all or are you going to leave that?
We thought.
Will we find them? Okay, thank you, Lisa.
And is the idea to gather input from the public as to what the EAC will be focusing on?
Yes.
So this is a one-time expense to the EAC.
Correct.
Want to work with a professional to make sure the survey is distributed widely and get the input.
You will go first? No, no, by all means, by all means.
Ms. Duncan and I had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Brown over the weekend. She told us about the survey and what the EAC is doing. I expressed to her and I'll express my concerns here that $4,500 or up to $9,000 for a survey to tell us what a very small minority of the public thinks, to me, seems like a tremendous waste of our resources, especially to the environmental advisory community. The money could be much better spent on planting trees, more seed packets over the course of time, or trail markers, or a million other things, frankly. Ms. Brown also provided to us five or six great ideas that the EAC has, initiatives, that I don't think that it would be great to have before the board. One of the reasons that we have committees is for those committees to tell us, to suggest to us what the public wants or what they think is important. And it's the board's responsibility as elected officials on behalf of the township residents to determine if those ideas are valuable to the residents or not valuable to the residents. And every six years, we're answerable to the residents. $9,000 seems like an astronomical sum of money to find out whether township residents are interested in a plastic bag or a band plastic straws. It's difficult for me to vote on spending that much money on a survey when the EAC already has a ton of great ideas. That would be a huge benefit to the township.
Kind of just to expand on what Mike said, we did spend some time, I think it was upwards of an hour and a half, to talk to Lisa from the EAC. You know, I'm a policy director for a state representative. I wrote legislation related to transitioning Pennsylvania to renewable energy by the year 2050. It has not passed the legislature, but it is out there. The Sierra Club is very active in promoting Ready 100 for Montgomery County and for all municipalities. However, as of the year 2022, that initiative is ending. I ran on the fact that I wanted, Lower Gwinnett to at least pass a resolution related to us pursuing renewable energy by the year 2050 and mitigating it by the year 2035. There is an entire infrastructure that the Sierra Club has established to support municipalities in making that transition. The resolution is just a resolution. It's not norms. It's not a law. It has no teeth. It means just that we've taken a stand. I've seen other municipalities take, not municipalities, I've seen the state take a stand about their love of hot dogs. That's what a resolution is. We would take a stand that we are actively pursuing the transition to renewable energy. And then with that resolution typically comes the teeth and the teeth is the transition plan. The teeth is the, is how you connect that to actionable items and what that approach looks like. The state has in its infrastructure, through the Department of DEP and EPA, a toolkit that outlines how each municipality can implement. And with that toolkit, they partner you with colleges and universities who they've identified as partners and receive state funding, i.e. our tax dollars, to assist municipalities and counties in completing some of this work. So I am hard pressed to spend $4,500 knowing that there's an infrastructure, a toolkit, and already laid out tax dollars identified to support municipalities in completing some of this work. Because of that, I would implore the EAC to put forth a resolution of how they want us to transition and reduce our carbon footprint and become more energy, to conserve energy and to look to renewable energy as our source. I would implore them to utilize some of the resources that already exist for Ready 100 before it does completely go away. I would ask them to be a partner with the work group and as part of that work group, take advantage of the toolkits, which connect you with college students who are using sustainable energy, reducing the carbon footprint as part of their studies and have received state funding to assist municipalities in writing not only the transition plan, but also writing how to effectively implement the transition plan in addition to surveys. While I understand the need for surveys, and I actually love surveys, because I think it gives you data, which is useful in moving forward. In Lower Gwinnett, we did a survey that cost us $13,000 for us to understand how the entire township communicated with each other and received information from the township and was receptive and how the township was receptive of the community's information or communication. I'm having a hard time understanding us spending $9,000 for one committee that's advising the board about one specific subject matter. That is huge and I truly believe and respect what the EAC is trying to accomplish. But I think in comparison, knowing that the Park and Rec took advantage of that, of that contract that we had with Communication Solutions, in fact, and spent a fraction of that and did receive good, good surveys and results, were able to turn that into a strategic plan and now we're actually taking strategic steps to implement that plan. I would like the EAC to take the steps that they know about, that they are aware of, and then utilize the resources that the state has already identified before we use the taxpayer dollars of Lower Gwinnett. Are there any other comments from the board?
So are you saying, are you asking them to come back with reduced costs or?
No, I'm asking, I'm actually.
Any value in this survey at this point?
At this moment, no, because we haven't identified the initiative that we're specifically taking on as it relates to renewable energy, as it relates to reducing our carbon footprint, as it relates to energy reduction, as it results to an array of things. Ms. Brown did discuss an array of things that were very meaningful, that they could and would pursue. I think making that, making that a plan before you decide to put forth a survey asking generalized questions about policy, in my opinion, would be more productive, especially given the fact that there is a toolkit, there are resources that could partner you with a university who would have way more time than our volunteers have, which is just a few hours a month, that they could conduct a survey for free, if not at lower cost, already utilizing our state tax dollars.
Yeah, I, I think there's, the survey was a bit misconstrued as to the objective, but I wanted to have the EAC, I take the point, and perhaps having open forums to the public to gather information with the same purpose. And so that way we could gather the information from the public. So what was going to be in the survey were actionable items, not argumentable of reducing energy. And the point of, I think, hiring a professional was to help tailor those questions so that the committee could understand how the public felt about them, us spending taxpayer dollars on. So I don't think there was a bad rationale for doing the survey. Certainly, if you have more information to relay about college students and so forth, that's really valuable information. I'm not sure any committee knew about that.
I mean, EPA and the EP have a toolkit that partners you with universities throughout Pennsylvania and those students from those universities help you work on identifying their initiatives, identifying your transition plan. And you, and part of that identification can be served and it's all incorporated, it's already our tax dollars.
Yeah, I think the Energy Committee is on top of many of the things that we suggest and is ready to put forward a resolution. But in terms of our commitment, I ran on a commitment to communicate, be more transparent and communicate with the community as we did. And so I think maybe having an open forum.
Absolutely.
Together, interested parties and see, you know, get feedback from the public. Because I think it probably is a wise idea to understand, to let the public know what we have in mind, how we're going to be spending eventually their money once we put together strategic plans for transitioning to clean energy.
And I think part of the conversation with Lisa is that I talked about, in order for all of us, not just you liaison, to know what's going on in the EAC, there is opportunity for us to have a special board meeting where the EAC has invited the entire boards there and we can learn about what their plans are and the public can be invited to comment and participate.
Oh, I think that's fabulous. The more communication with the public, the better. And so we know that not everybody reads our publications, not everybody comes to these meetings. So the more chance that we have to communicate and interact with the public, I think these are going to be big efforts going to do. So it's really vital.
So given all of that, I'm going to make a motion to table the consideration in the EAC to engage in the services of the Communication Solution Group to conduct a survey on the environmental priorities. Is there a second?
I just have a question. I'm just curious what the other subcommittee member has, what you're inputted.
Yeah, so I, thank you. I've spoken with Lisa at length about this. I, like Danielle and Tessie, I think are supportive of a survey. Initially, when we were talking about it in the subcommittee level, we were very supportive of the idea of a survey. The cost to me, when it came back, was very shocking and that was the concern that I shared with the EAC chairs. I think we have better initiatives at the moment in mind that we could spend our money on. And while I don't think surveys are invaluable, I do see value in the survey. I think, given the cost, it makes sense to refocus right now.
Okay. Well, that's what our subcommittees are for, make recommendations to the full board. So.
So we have before us a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to table the consideration of the EAC to engage in the services of the Communication Solution Group to conduct a survey on environmental priorities. So we kind of did committee reports, this Park and Rec and EAC and EMS already talked, so I think we're done?
Yes.
Public comment? Does anyone have any comments? You want to come, can you please just state your name and address?
Karen McCreevy, 924 North Hurry Drive. In May of 2021, at the start kind of of our section of the In May of 2021, at the start kind of of our section of the 202 reconstruction, I had asked about getting break rate charter prohibited along 202. Penn Dot, of course, shut me down, and I forwarded it, we'll be now to you and Craig, the end of May 2021. Was looking for an update on that. Since we're nearing the end of this and the break are starting again, they were going very early this morning.
Thank you.
In the, in the construction section, where they're supposed to be going slow anyway.
Penn Dot, I don't have an answer for you on Plymouth Road.
Ms. McCreevy, can you just tell me again when you, when you made that request? And so we have to request this today from Penn Dot, is that right, Chad?
We did. We, we drafted a letter for Craig to submit to Penn Dot, and he submitted that letter requesting that they conduct a study to go back and take a look. I can't, I can't recall now if they said they were going to wait until after construction was done to do the study. We'll, we'll go back and take a look at what the more, most recent correspondence from Penn Dot was in regards to that.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chad, but can you just give us clarification on like what the typical process is?
Yeah, it's similar to a lot of the, the different traffic things that that we talk about, whether it's stop signs or turn restrictions or those type of things. There's certain conditions that have to be met in, in order, in certain types of roads that are eligible for the engine retarder restrictions. So I don't have those with me this evening, but.
You don't know if we met them or not?
I don't. We haven't, we haven't gotten the results of the study.
Oh, okay.
From Penn Dot.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go back and take a look at the most recent correspondence, just to give an update on when they plan to complete that.
Okay. So approximately, how, how long could Ms. McCreevy expect to get a response? Greg or Chad?
It's, I'll say it can be a lengthy process to get these studies completed by Penn Dot, just because they're inundated with them across the entire
The entire state.
Region. So it's really hard to give timeframes for when to expect something from them. Sometimes it can take a few weeks. Sometimes it can, it can take a few months, but we'll follow back up with them and try and get an idea of when they expect to complete it.
Okay.
But there's no alternative?
That was going to be my next question. Yeah. Is there, is there a next? If, so if it's, if it's not approved, what is the other alternative?
There is no alternative.
There's no, is there an appeal?
Excuse me?
Is there an appeal?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm just trying to answer every question I think Ms. McCreevy would have.
No, it's, it's a state-owned road, so they have the, they have the final jurisdiction.
I did see them. So it's just that, okay. This is that stretch we swore to, I mean, we'd get outside the township at one point, but down to the, the border of the town. Thank you so much. So somebody will follow up with you as soon as we have information, but you feel free to email any of us if you have questions in the interim.
Yeah, thanks for hanging through this long meeting to.
That was very painful. You should have just raised your hand.
Obviously very important to you.
So I've been waiting too.
Can you please state your name and address?
So Carmina Taylor, I don't live here, but I'm a lifelong resident. I really came and I really want you to hear me. I want the new board members or Mike to, to see me and Jeanine to see me. I'm coming in the lens of applying for the Historical Commission. I think it's very important for me to frame a couple contexts. I was on a Zoom call outside during the first hour because I had to be on another Zoom call. But when I saw these, the proposals for the Penland Park, I thought about when I was a little kid in Penland, and we had a dilapidated park for years, for decades, before it looked like what it does today. And when I saw the plans that you were doing, I think this may be about the third or fourth kind of reiteration of the park, I just kept thinking, I had my childhood in Penland Park. So I don't live in Penland anymore. I downsized after my son went to college, but I was thinking two thirds of my life had been here as a resident. Okay, so that's the context. My name is Carmina Taylor, Mike. So I wanted to just say that I came here a couple of months ago blindly as a Washehican alumni, asking for approval for the signage in Penland because it's being gentrified and it has a lot of history, and I think it's very important to try to preserve the history. Another context, Mike, my grandfather was a second Baptist preacher in Penland. He baptized the whole community in 22 years. My mom was a very big activist here. So I grew up here behind a lineage of people that advocated for the community, especially in Penland. So when I brought up that proposal, I was asked to apply to the Historical Commission. I applied to the Historical Society. And once I submitted my application, I'd never received an acknowledgement of my receipt or notification of the next steps. I was under the assumption by the next meeting that I was going to propose some ideas for the signage. Then I learned that you were doing the Historical Commission, and you wanted that process to preserve aspects of the community with that body. So what I have a problem with is that I feel like by me submitting my resume, applying to the application, I opened myself up to all of you that don't know me, okay? And I took that pretty seriously, I guess. And in listening all night about the subcommittees and having two board liaisons and subcommittees, you know, I feel like there should have been more transparency about the process in which we were embarking after I, I submitted my information, right? Because I didn't know the night that you were going to make the announcement. I didn't know the process of ascension. I didn't know what you were looking for. So not only did I not know when you were going to release it, then a week later, I received two letters from you. One unsigned, one 45 minutes later signed. But then it was referring to me. It was unfortunate that I couldn't participate, even though I was a resident, which clearly I was not a resident. So it was a form letter that wasn't customized to me. It was customized to the other people that didn't get on the Historical Commission, which personally I think is pretty unprofessional. And then I talked to people that got on the committee, and there was no guidelines for them as to when there was going to be a first meeting or what was the scope. And why that's important is because I was sitting here thinking, shouldn't we all know? And I remember talking to Jeanine that even if I didn't get on, I would still encourage to participate as a non-boarding member. I did not receive that notification, and I didn't know that you were having that first meeting. That was not expressed to me. So I also did a write-to-know request because I was intrigued to find out that if you are formulating this committee, do you have a process and procedure in place? You do not. So this is another kind of situation between me doing something on the Parks and Recreation and putting myself out here that I was definitely treated differently and not professionally, in my opinion. So when I sat here and I listened about you formulate and establishing a Human Relations Commission, I used to be on the Montgomery County Human Relations Commission. If you approve that ordinance, I think you did, you have to go through another process to get, you don't have to get in process to have.
We didn't approve the ordinance. We just, I'm sorry, we didn't approve the ordinance. We just advertised it.
We had to advertise before.
Before, but you plan to have a creation of one.
Next, we have to have a hearing. We have to have a hearing next.
Right. So the whole point is there's a process that you have to do that, and people that apply and put themselves out there to become a member, because I know that Ambler and Lansdale have their own, you know? And and getting to your point about teeth at the, at the state level, a lot of people don't even know that exists. And traditionally, that was there for people that were black. So I'm here because regardless of whether I live here, I have invested three fourths of my life here. I'm well-known, good, bad, or indifferent, and I should be respected. And I haven't been. And the fact of the matter is, when we sit here and you talk about all these things, and then when you talk about the, the Ingersoll Park, the two places that you need to permit this stuff for, how easy would it be to honor Penland under the Historical Commission, something easy, and go through a process of determining how you're going to deal with two historical buildings? I am abashed. And quite honestly, Danielle, I, I sat here and I've listened to you, and I see that you cut people off, you cut me off, all this stuff. And I just cannot believe that someone like me that's lived here, raised her kids here. My, I graduated from Washehican, my son did, my mom graduated from Ambler High. I'm vested. And I deserve respect. And I want you to recognize that you did not have anything structured for the Historical Commission, and you did not communicate with me as someone that opened myself up to all of you with my business. It's unacceptable. And I needed to be here to say that to you because you cannot do that to people.
Thank you. Carmina, can I just, before you sit down, I just want to address about the Historical Committee, because I agree with you. We don't have any real policies or procedures about how we go about appointing our committees. The way I understand it, you know, I'm new to the board. And we did have a conversation. I thought we had a nice conversation. And I thought I shared with you that we were, my goal was to appoint the committee at the next meeting after we spoke. But I'm only one member of the board, right? So our agenda, I asked the chair to get it on there. I say I'm ready to make my recommendations. The rest of the board has a say as well. I said I spoke with all of the applicants, because I did, I, I, on the phone.
Is somebody else that is another board member that's on that committee? Should there have been two people that interviewed all?
Well, there was some confusion about who was going to be the other liaison at the time. So Danielle is currently the, the other liaison on the committee, but I don't remember when that switch got made. But, so I, you know, I spoke with everybody. My understanding of the process, which was advised by the manager, by our solicitor, was that the liaisons will interview the candidates, one or both of them. I don't know that it's always, you know, the full board or both liaisons. And then they make a recommendation to the board. The board has the opportunity to discuss the recommendation, to make other recommendations, and and then there's a vote. And, and I, I'm confident I shared that process with, with the people with whom I spoke. So I, I, I'm pretty sure I shared that with you. I did not know for sure when we would be voting, because I, you know, I don't set the agenda. But I had said that I was hopeful that we would vote at the next meeting. The agenda is always advertised, so it's, it's always on our website what we're going to be talk, talking about. We have to do that legally.
Do you think, not to draw, but do you think that that should have been in writing to people that apply? Do you think there should have been a follow-up and writing to people? I mean, I spoke to you in my car, and I did it because I wanted to.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, that we should have, that we should have better, you know, policies and procedures about how we, how we communicate with the applicants. As it stands, I think some applications kind of still are just kind of sitting in our folder right now, if the position's already been filled. And so I, I think that's a good suggestion. I'm sorry that you feel, you weren't treated differently. I'll say that. All, all the applicants were treated the same, right? They, they were as informed about the process as I was and about, as I shared with you. So if we need to put better policies and procedures in place, I think that's a good, a good suggestion. But you weren't treated differently. I promise you that, Carmina. I know you have a vested interest in this community, just because you don't live here. I shared with you that I do think that priority should be given to residents to be on the committees. So it wasn't like, oh, she doesn't live here. I'm not considering her application. It was not that way from my point of view. And I, I wanted to share that with you. We have another person from Penland who's very, who still lives here and is, Ms. Gloria's, you know, up on the history of Penland as well. And I want, I, as I said to you, I invite you to come to the meetings. That first meeting was a workshop. We're still trying to come up with the purposes and the goals of the committee. You know, once our meetings are established, I want you to come. I want you to make the presentation about the signs. I think even Ms. Gloria said on the committee. She likes that idea. We just got to figure out what we're going to put on the signs and where we're going to put them. So I definitely agree with you that Penland's an important part of this township, and it needs to be, you know, acknowledged and preserved, and community conversation needs to be ongoing. So I want you to know that I do hear you.
Jeanine, my comments really work for you and, and, and here's the point, though. I did come here, even though I'm, I'm definitely perturbed. It is to look about how you do things in the future in a better way. All I'm saying is that if someone takes the time to submit their, their resume and fill out an application for a volunteer position, the least the township could do is communicate with them along the process and right.
Sure. I think that's a good point.
Okay. And to take that into account, if the, in the future, you do the same thing for a new committee or another committee or, you know, whatever.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for that comment. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I have a question, if, if that's okay. I just wanted to, I won't keep it long. It's just a quick follow-up to Mrs. McGreevy, I guess it is. You spoke about the break retarder ordinance. I asked for that such ordinance four years ago, and I have the paperwork that the township needs to fill out. So it's a whole process. But if there's a way that the township can connect the two of us via email, I'd like to talk to you, and we can kind of collaborate and coordinate our efforts.
Yeah, Reith is right there.
She's right there. I requested this four years ago, break retarder, so. You're, okay, okay. But that would be great if the township could connect the two emails, if you have her email address. That would be great.
That sounds like a job for Craig.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments? None?
I, I.
Oh, go ahead.
Kathy Pegano, 411 Brookside.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for approving to advertise a nondiscrimination ordinance. As the, an LGBT person myself, living in Lower Gwinnett, this means a lot. So thank you so much for pushing it forward and, and hopefully we can get it passed in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
And also to Chief Kenny, thank you so much for handling all my emails about aggressive drivers. Doing a great job. And I know when you see my name in your inbox, you jump right on it, so I appreciate it.
Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, I think next on the agenda is the manager's report.
Yes, real quick, just the, that our audit began Monday. We have the auditing company in. So that will hopefully take a couple more weeks, and we should have hopefully positive results from that. Tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, so the staff will be celebrating with a light lunch tomorrow afternoon. And I'm sure the board's going to mention anything, but Dr. Booth passed away on April 15th, and just my condolences to his family and friends on his passing.
Thank you. Supervisor comments, Kathy?
Yes, I have a question. So I live on Plymouth Road and just recently, Penn Dot took out the little stone bridge between my house and the post office. And so it was kind of a surprise to me that this happened. I didn't have a forewarning by much time that it, that it was going to affect. And it affects everybody on Surrey Drive trying to get to the train station now. Not to mention the beautiful little old stone bridge is gone. And Jamie is working with me to help find a picture of what might be going in there. But I'm afraid we lost the opportunity, because I didn't know this was happening, to get a pedestrian bridge or extension to, to this car bridge for either pedestrians or bicycles. Because, you know, that, that stretch of road between Surrey Drive
Because, you know, that, that stretch of road between Surrey Drive or Latch Street and, and the post office and the train station is only a mile and, uh, it, it should be walkable. And, and yet we, you know, it's very dangerous to go over that bridge. And so if, um, if we could have incorporated a pedestrian crossing, it wouldn't be so dangerous there. I spoke to some folks at, at PSATS in PennDOT and there, there is a program called, um, PennConnect which allows, uh, townships to communicate with PennDOT, uh, and express our desires. And when I explained about this pedestrian bridge, the lady finally told me that, well, you would have had to have it on your strategic plan, uh, that that was important to you. And I'm thinking, oh, well, there's a missed opportunity. Uh, and I asked her if it was possible to have a liaison between our township and PennDOT so that there's always communication going on, so that we always know what PennDOT's getting ready to do, you know, a couple of years ahead to give us time to, you know, write something into a strategic plan. And she said there, there is no such thing as that. So, um, I, I'm not sure what the answer is. Uh, maybe we can start using the PennConnect more, but it's, uh, it's kind of upsetting when things like this happen. All the trees are gone and the bridge is gone.
Just, uh, in terms of this particular project, one clarification. This particular bridge on Plymouth Road is a section of Plymouth Road. It's owned by the government county.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. That's okay because there's a portion that's owned by PennDOT. There's a portion that's owned by the county. But, you know, that, that project was handled by the government county. So, but going back to your point of the PennDOT connects program, they, she was right, they don't have like a dish or fly contact person for that. It's kind of geared on a project, right, project basis where the project manager for PennDOT on that particular project is responsible.
So the replacement of that bridge was by Montgomery County?
Correct.
You should have known, I should have.
I can't recall the exact location where the owner should change starts of this.
I think it says the county. Well, in many cases, it, it is a bit upsetting that we have lost this feature in the trees and we didn't have the opportunity to put, uh, you know, a wider pedestrian bridge there. And so whatever we can do going forward to, to try to get a heads up, uh, ahead of time, I, I would appreciate knowing how to address that. That would be very useful, I think.
Well, it, unfortunately at this point, it's.
Get out, let it, yeah.
I can't recall, did Jamie or working get a, a plan that, for?
They provided a plan which I had sent to Tessie and Janine, um, but it's just a bridge plan. Like it doesn't show any renderings or anything like that, but there is no, um, what's that? No, it, it's just, um, a five-foot shoulder on each side and two 11-foot wide lanes. Um, and I think the additional widening that's shown is the tree, the additional tree removal is because of the different structure that they're putting in and not because of, um, accommodating pedestrian.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Tessie?
No, that's all. I just wanted to put that out there and see if there's a remedy. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Craig said, um, at the passing of Dr. Booth, the many condolences to his family and loved ones. And, um, also to thank Tessie for taking time out of her busy schedule to represent Lower Gwinnett, Lower Gwinnett, PSETS in Hershey. There we go. I hope it was worth your time. Thanks again, Tessie.
Um, I, I echo those sentiments and I just want to add that there is a vacancy in our Parks and Rec board and so we're accepting volunteer applications. So for anyone who's hung in, uh, hung in here this long or is watching this at home, um, we are accepting volunteer applications to fill that position. Thank you.
Mike? I just wanted to extend condolences to the Booth family. Um, I didn't have the pleasure of serving with him, but didn't know him and I just want to offer them our sympathy. Um, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. So moved. Uh, you made the motion, so I'm in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.